Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, November 26, 2024. It's 9:05 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. My left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fortner and Commissioner Emily Claus. On Zoom, we have Commissioner Carolina Mejia. County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell as well. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're going to be reviewing the draft agenda for next week's board meeting for December 3rd and then taking up some standing items. County Manager?
Thank you so much. Chair, and we have the commissioners and our hardworking staff in the audience. I'll hand over to our Clerk of the Board to talk about our special guest.
Good morning, Commissioners. Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. There is an item on your consent agenda today for the transfer of retired K-9, and they're here this morning to say hi. And I think it's their day off, so if you'd like to say hi to them first, meet and greet with the pup if he's here. Do that first.
Yeah, why don't you come on forward?
Come on forward.
Yeah. This room loves animals. Timid of other people, so. This is Bowie. You may want to come forward and check.
Oh my gosh, don't leave yet, okay?
I think it'd be great to get a photo if we can.
All right, let's do it. How many minutes CD Commissioner Mejia?
I'm like three minutes away. Just wait on for me three minutes.
Want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah. About his career.
Yeah.
Career? So this is K-9 Bowie. He's a four-year-old German Shepherd. He is my second dog with Thurston County. I previously was Dexter's handler and him and I worked the road. Little over six years. Bowie is retiring today because I got promoted and I've been running a dog for about 12 years in my career. And I'm getting old and it's tiresome, so. And I have three kids at my house, so I don't need another dog. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I just want to thank you guys for having me here today and Bowie and.
He's going home with you.
Yes. Yep, so knock on wood he behaves and will be good to go.
All right. Well, thank you for being here on your day off.
Absolutely.
We appreciate. We know that our Sheriff's team and especially the dog handler team does a lot for our community. And I also know that among the commissioners, this is something important for them. Plus, having animals always is a great way to start a long meeting. So, thank you so much. And we're waiting for another commissioner to join, and it would be great if you're okay with that to get a photo?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I don't have a department-issued friend riding with me anymore, so that's kind of weird, but. He's much more rambunctious than Dexter was.
How old is he?
He's four. So he's pretty young still, but, you know, it was one of those things that trading him in to supervise humans, so. Thank you.
If he, um, is there like a, if you weren't being promoted and stuff like, is there a certain amount of time that, like, he retires at seven or something like that?
So I think, I think we retire Jackson Dexter at eight. So that's industry standards, about eight. Because it's really important for us, like, these dogs work really hard, consume their lifespan, so we we want to retire them young enough where they're still mobile and they can still enjoy retirement and kind of be a normal dog. They transition really well. Like, like I said, Dexter is, he's my wife's dog now. He just hangs out at the house with her. An absolute pet, so.
What kind of dog is Dexter?
A German Shepherd, so.
Also black?
No, he's, he's got some sable in him, so he's, his legs are brown and whatnot, but he just turned 12, so. He's been retired for about.
Morning Sheriff. Hello, how are you? Uh, we have like a lot of items. I think everyone does today.
Yeah, it's a big agenda. All right, well.
I think I hear the doors.
She went running in. All right.
Absolutely. So he's not super friendly like Dexter was, so. That made me nervous. I was like, oh, good.
Where should we stand?
Where do you want me?
I'm going to get a picture.
Yeah. Right where you are?
Perfect.
Yeah, gather around. Morning Sheriff.
I'll take it from right here so you all angle towards me.
Thanks so much for being here.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
Sheriff, as we transition into the agenda review, just a quick note maybe from, from the clerk, that this is a pretty packed agenda. The reason it is is because on calendar, we had the meeting the week of the WASAC conference, and so that pushed a lot of items. I want to thank all our department staff for working to get their items in, as well as the clerk who's been working a lot to grab items, bring them, transition. That's why we had the public hearings yesterday, so this is a packed one and ready, ready to hit it.
Okay, so we're here. Commissioner, I would excuse, I forgot to mention, this morning's meeting, and we're going to jump right into the Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024 draft agenda. Call that meeting at order 2 p.m. Approval of agenda, opportunity for public to address the board and county managers' update per usual. Anything to report that you're planning to report on, County Manager?
The only item I would like just to report on is, you know, we are excited about the internal promotions of our CPED Director, our Public Health and Social Service Director, and our Budget Fiscal Manager Director.
So you give a report on that?
Yeah, we'll give a little shout out to them and, uh, yeah, I think they're doing fantastic job, and we're excited that they've all agreed to take the positions.
Perfect. Then we'll have consent items, 1 through 39. We couldn't even use letters of the alphabet because we had too many. All right, so 31 is Central Services Lease Amendment Extension with Capital Recovery Center.
Commissioners, Rick Thomas with the Capital Projects Planning Team. First one that we have here today is a lease amendment for the Capital Recovery Center. This is for the Thurston County Health, Thurston County Public Health Drug Use Health Program, and this is to extend an existing contract for one year. Any questions?
Current rate, nothing changing really?
All, all stays the same, current rate, $3,680 a month.
Questions on item 1?
Why is it only one year?
The extension.
The extension.
Why is the extension only one year? I'm not sure honestly why it wasn't extended more than one year at this point.
Oh, Robin, go ahead.
Is this the organization that wants to purchase the?
I haven't heard that for sure.
We'll do the research and get back to you, Commissioner Mejia.
Okay. Item 2, Central Services Lease Amendment Extension with the West Thurston Regional Fire Authority.
Again, Rick Thomas, and this has to do with the Sheriff's Office having some office space in the West Thurston Regional Fire area. This is a three-year lease extension, and it stays at the current rate of $200 per month. Any questions on this lease amendment?
Sounds reasonable. Thank you. Let's go to item 3, Central Services as well, Lease Amendment with TCOM 911.
Okay, again, yeah, Rick Thomas, and this has to do with a lease amendment for the TCOM 911 building. This is not an extension or any of that sort of thing. When we were looking through the lease, we found that there were some inconsistencies in the way that we were actually documenting rates to the customer. And so in order to just clarify what the rates are that we charge, we wanted to document it in a, in a readable format so everybody clearly understood what the rates were going to be and how much, with a projection of what they would be within the next year. So this, quite candidly, is, it's just kind of cleaning up a lease that didn't have quite as much detail in it. It just helps us with our accounting, and it helps the TCOM 911 group with their accounting as well.
Transparency.
So, a question on how this is worded?
Yes.
Rate increases for 2024 by $77,813?
Yes.
And by, in 2025, by $7,000 per month? So, it almost reads like it's $77,000 per month rate increase. I mean, those, those can't both be rates, right?
The first rate, the $77,000 rate is an annual rate for the building reserves. And then the $7,000 rate increase in 2025 includes, I'm going to say, kind of a normal type 3% increase of all the rates that would include the building reserves, the IT rates, the other central services rates. So, it's, it's spelled out, I mean, it's spelled out in the contract. We can certainly take a look at clarifying that if you'd like us to.
I mean, if you just put, like, after the $77,814?
Yes.
If you just put maybe parentheses?
Building reserves for the, for the year or something?
Yeah, annual building reserve. It would make it, I think, a little less confusing based on how it's worded.
Clarify the actions.
Yeah, otherwise it seems like it's a typo, frankly.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on item? I recall we'd done some kind of analysis on selling that building to TCOM. Is that right? I remember something to that effect.
I don't know that we've done an analysis. I think what we're at is the, the concept of, of an idea.
Yeah.
There's some potential conversation that may be happening that then we could come back to the, to the board and talk about that.
Okay.
But it's, it's infancy right now.
Yeah, the TCOM Director is interested. Okay, other questions on item 3? Item 4?
Thanks, Rick.
Is Commerce General Clean Energy RFA Grant Agreement. Rebecca Harvey, good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Rebecca Harvey, Climate Meditation Senior Program Manager. So this is a contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce for a general clean energy grant that will be brought to you for approval at next week's commission meeting. This is a plan and grant of $130,000 with no county match required. That is funded by the Washington Climate Commitment Act to conduct a multi-site community solar feasibility study. The county will be hiring a technical consultant to evaluate the solar potential of 10 county-owned sites, which are listed on page 22 of the grant contract in your packet. And we'll identify up to five of the sites for detailed feasibility studies and conceptual design. I'm working closely with Rick Thomas, Capital Projects Planning Manager, on this. And the name of the, the grant, Community Solar, is because in addition to the site feasibility, the studies will also examine various ownership models and funding opportunities to deploy future solar projects, and one of which is a low-income community solar model, which is a subscriber-type system that provides shares of the solar array to low-income residents or low-income service providers to allow them partial ownership and equity in the, and offer these clean energy benefits to our, directly to our community members. So it'll provide information on what would be involved in that type of a model, as well as other models that we might want to pursue in the future. And so the overall outcome of these feasibility studies will be to prepare Thurston County for successful future grant applications to fund solar installations on county property. Any questions?
So good job getting that $130,000. So this is, the action is for the board to approve the receipt of the $130,000 from Commerce, a no-match grant.
We love those. Any questions for Rebecca? Nope. Thank you. It was great.
Okay. I got one more.
Yep, item 5, Request for Proposals for Energized Thurston 2025 Heat Pump and Heat Pump Water Heater Installation Services.
Okay, and I brought Julia Downing up with me for this one. Julia is, to remind you, our Community Energy Fellow. It's a fellowship that is fully funded through the U.S. Department of Energy, and she's been with us since August, doing an amazing job and working very closely with me to advance this initiative. So, for this item, we are requesting authorization to issue a request for proposals to select qualified HVAC and plumbing contractors for the 2025 Energized Thurston campaign. This request builds, builds on over a year of planning for a regional home energy efficiency and electrification campaign along with our partners in the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Tonino that's joining this initiative. And the board approved an interlocal agreement for this regional initiative on February 20th, 2024. And then on September 17th, approved a grant through the State Home Electrification and Appliance Rebates or Here program of $472,263, also with no match required from the county, to fund the subsidized installations of heat pumps and heat pump water heaters for low and moderate income households throughout Thurston County. We're combining that with the grants that our partner Citi has also received, which is over $2 million for the county altogether for this program. So now we're ready to issue this RFP to select the contractors to provide these installations to homeowners, and we're bringing it to, for your approval next week at December 3rd commission meeting. And we expect to bring the contracts with the selected installers to the board for approval on March 4th. And I sent an email, e-brief, last Tuesday on the 19th summarizing this RFP, as well as some of the other contracts that are in process to stand up this program, which we aim to launch in March 2025. Very excited to bring this program to Thurston County residents. Not only will it help meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals for the region, it will also make a tangible difference for our community by reducing household energy costs and making homes more efficient and comfortable. And it will focus on helping the lowest-income members of our community who need it the most. So I will pause there and see if you have any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Is that, is this one joint RFP for all those jurisdictions?
Yes. So, we are also working on an interlocal agreement that I will bring to you in January, and in that it specifies the roles and responsibilities of each jurisdiction. Thurston County will be serving as the lead jurisdiction and doing this contracting on behalf, not on behalf, but for the overall program. And makes sense for us to do that. We have Julia, we have the staff here to kind of play that lead role.
That's excellent. And then where will the RFP, if anyone's listening, where would they be able to find it?
If, if anyone wants to apply, it'll. It'll be posted in the Esqualing Valley News, the county's official newspaper, and online under the Contract Opportunities page.
Question. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Julia, what was your title again? What kind of fellow?
Community Energy Fellow.
Community Energy Fellow. Okay, great. Thank you so much for this.
And Rebecca wanted to provide this opportunity to demonstrate the commitment that the commissioners have made to climate action and that they, we have a fully funded fellow, fully funded fellow out there doing the work and participating with all the communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Item 6 is Emergency Services Contract for Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ben Miller Todd, Director of Emergency Services. This is the EMPG, or Emergency Management Performance Grant. You've seen this grant multiple times, the recurring annual grant. The funding is primarily used to support Thurston County Emergency Management's public education outreach programs, resource management, logistics planning, preparedness and mitigation planning, and portions of salaries for emergency management coordinator positions. You'll notice that the dates on the, the grant period are June 1st of 2024 through September of 2025. The grant was actually received from FEMA September 9th at the Military Department, then was passed on in November. And FEMA and, actually DHS and FEMA allow for reimbursement, actually backdate the contract themselves to allow for reimbursement within the, the grant period. We proactively track these components within our, within TC Connect in order to pull those and make sure that those funds are appropriately allocated. With that, I'll open up for any questions that you may have.
Questions on EMPG?
Thanks.
Okay, next items are Human Resources. We have four items for the HR team. First up is number 7, which is a resolution to reclassify position in Medic One Training Assistant.
Good morning, Commissioners. Maria Fonte, HR Director, and with me is Compensation and Benefits Manager Tara Wickline. This first request comes from Medic One. They currently have a position classified as Medic One Training Assistant. And upon evaluation of the duties, they are requesting to reclassify to an Administrative Assistant One. Both positions are nonrepresented, and in terms of the salary, it's cost-neutral because both positions are paid the same, and the position is funded through Medic One levy funds. Any questions on that one?
Questions on this one? No, go ahead.
Okay. The next request is from Public Health and Social Services. Prior to the pandemic, they hired the health official at a .6 FTE. Because of the increased workload to pandemic response, they increased it to a full-time FTE. Now with the transition of the work and going back to somewhat normal operations, they are requesting to return it to that .6 FTE. They've already had discussions with the health officer in terms of which duties are being basically reduced or reassigned. And this actually is a 7,200 a month decrease from the following funds, 10% general fund, 8% indirect funds, and 10% COVID funds. So this is a budget decrease.
How much again? What'd you say the decrease was?
Uh, seventy-two-hundred, approximately seventy-two-hundred per month. So, um, the current salary at full-time is eighteen thousand a month, and it would decrease to thirteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight. And this would take effects on January first.
Questions on this one? Nope. No too.
Okay. The next item I may have to shift to the December seventeenth, um, agenda setting or the meeting, and I'll explain why. This request is from the Sheriff's Office. During budget, they received, uh, a Operation Sergeant that was due to, um, become effective June first of two thousand twenty-five. And they also received a Deputy Sheriff that is due to become effective January first of two thousand twenty-five. They're requesting to swap those start dates. Um, the piece of information that I don't have for today is that this does result in a ten-thousand-dollar-a-year increase because they'll be hiring the higher-paid position starting January first. Um, and I have an inquiry to budget in terms of if that will be absorbed or this would have comments or a budget, um, request attached to it. So I'm just asking for a little bit more time to get a response to that.
Okay.
Then the final, um, request is also from the Sheriff's, um, office. And, um, they, the sheriff is seeking, um, to make a job offer to an external, um, candidate. Currently, the Sheriff Management Pay Plan does not have a provision that allows them to offer, uh, a lead bank of, um, eighty hours. And so this request is to make a one-time exception to that pay plan in order to allow the sheriff to make a competitive job offer to an external candidate. Again, that would be, uh, bank of eighty hours.
Is, is this process different than the lateral process that includes the lead bank and the, and the incentive pay? And so, so there's.
Correct. So that's a different, uh, a separate resolution that only applies to lateral, uh, Deputy Sheriffs.
Okay.
And this one would apply to an at-will-appointed chief position.
So this wouldn't come with the pay bonus and the additional?
It does not.
Questions? Item ten.
Okay. Well, thank you.
IT, Contract Renewal for Backup Data Storage and Expansion Purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Keller, Information Technology Technical Manager. Uh, this is for, uh, the contract renewal for backup data storage and expansion. I move, the recommended action is to move to approve a one-year contract renewal with Bridge Data Solutions for Cohesitive Data Backup Support and Expansion of Storage Space for a total of two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven and eight cents, plus tax, and authorize the Director of Information Technology to execute the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent per, for five years. Can I answer any questions about our data backup solutions?
Nope. No. Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, we got public health items, four of them. Uh, item twelve is Amendment to Franz Anderson Interlocal Agreement.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Tom Webster, Senior Program Manager with the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. Um, so this item is to amend, um, an interlocal agreement that the board approved in November of two thousand twenty-three. This interlocal agreement is with the county, the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater. Um, under this interlocal agreement, the county is providing three-point-five-million dollars of ARPA funding for the construction of permanent supportive housing at Franz Anderson. Uh, due to a delay in that project, we're shifting funding sources. So this amendment just really removes references to the ARPA dollars and replaces that, um, with local, or local dollars. It does not change the county's commitment of three-point-five-million in funding for this project. But because the funds, the interlocal agreement represents an obligation of funds, we need to essentially de-obligate those funds for reporting to Department of Treasury. Um, so the other city councils also have this item on their agenda. Happy to answer any questions.
So, if I remember right, we kind of already agreed to this shifting of sources. So this is kind of just executing the decision we made a couple of months ago, or whatever it was?
That's correct. Um, so that's part of that process. And you actually have a, an item later on in your agenda today with Alex, with some of this money going to a family support center project, which is part of that larger plan. So yes, this is executing that plan of shifting the funds from this Franz Anderson project to other affordable housing projects where we can spend those funds in a timely manner.
Uh, and the ARPA funds that have shifted are not going to be used? We've accounted for those? I, I think that was part of the, I'm just trying to remind myself.
Yeah, th- there was a, an ARPA swap. The, the team is working to fully secure those. Uh, we believe that we have them in the works. Um, but we're just keeping our eye on making sure everything goes through and also with the budget team identifying, uh, other opportunities that the board has already approved that could use additional funding if needed. Once we get all that ironed in, ironed out, we'll bring that back for a full briefing at a work session.
Other questions for Tom? Okay, I don't hear any. Thank you, Tom. Next up.
Thank you.
Um. Reappointment of Regional Housing Council Homeless Services and Affordable Housing Advisory Members.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Alex Purce, Affordable Housing Program Manager in the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. Um, I'll be coming to the board to ask you all to renew the terms for the Regional Housing Council's Affordable Housing Advisory Board and the Homeless Services Advisory Board. Several members have terms that are expiring in December of two thousand twenty-four, so at the end of next month. Um, according to the RHC's Advisory Board Charter, members can renew their terms, um, once for up to three years. So four members of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board would like to renew their memberships, and two from the Homeless Services Advisory Board would like to renew their membership. Um, all turn, all members that are requesting renewal are in good standing. Um, they resubmitted applications to our advisory boards. We have, um, staff liaisons have reviewed those members' applications. Um, and the members for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board that are seeking renewal are Trudy Sukup, Trish Gregory, Jesse Simmons, and Donna Federn. And the two members seeking renewal for Homeless Services are Tammy Smith and Nova Patton. Staff took this reappointment request to the Regional Housing Council for their approval at their October twenty-third meeting. And they unanimously approved the request. Happy to answer any questions.
Do they have, can you remind me of the structure? Are the seats, like, allocated to certain groups or certain backgrounds? Or is it just, you kind of look at everybody's application and try to get a good mix of people? Because I, I, because I see a couple of pe- people's names who I know are representatives of groups, and I don't know if they're kind of representing that group or if they just happen to be the person because they've got experience that is relevant.
Yes. So in the charter, it does lay out, um, various requirements for percentages of folks who represent different types of organizations and also different, um, jurisdictions. So there, I'm not quite sure off the top of my head what percentage there are, but I think it's like a third need to represent, um, Olympic, City of Olympia, um, there's City of Tumwater represented, City of Lacey represented, and also, um, South County jurisdictions represented. I can pull up the charter, and next time I come back to you, I can also provide you more details on that if you would like.
I was just curious, like, Jesse Simmons, for example, is the representative for Olympia Master Builders. Is he there representing the master builders? Or is he just selected because he's got that background in?
Yeah, so.
Yes. Sorry, Alex, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, yes, he's not representing the Olympia Master Buildings. He is there representing, coming to the board to bring his expertise in development and.
Okay.
When we did the initial interviews a couple of years ago, the, um, idea behind it was, uh, getting individuals who had different perspectives on, specifically for the affordable housing. Um, it was to get different experiences, and, and it was based most on experience based on the organization they were representing.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Any other questions on, uh, thirteen? The reappointments. Assuming there's not, like, competing applications or that we're having to decide between other applicants that are not going to be selected?
We, at this time, um, the charter requires that we have eight to fourteen members on each board. So at the time when we, um, asked members if they wanted to renew their memberships, that kept our boards in with enough members so that we didn't anticipate having to go out to recruit new members. So we did not compare these applications to others. But in the future, when we need to recruit for more members, we will be seeking applications for membership.
Okay. All right, then we'll go to item fourteen. Thank you, Alex. Go to item fourteen, which is, uh, Lost Lake Resort, Spruce West, and East Septic.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Season-long Environmental Health Vision Director. Um, this grant is with the Washington State Department of Ecology for the Lost Lake Community On-Site System Improvement Project in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, this grant will be used to replace up to thirty-eight connections within the park, um, and it is a zero-grant-match fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Questions? Sounds like good stuff. All right, and how, um. Can you say, I mean, could you say a little more about the funding? Is it a new program? Is it competitive? I don't remember just getting.
Yeah, so this is a Centennial Grant Fund through the Department of Ecology. Um, it is a competitive grant application. Um, this is phase two of what we hope to be a four-phase project. Um, we have two other grants that we, um, submitted to Ecology, um, to complete the last two phases, and we should find out in July if we are going to receive those funds. And if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to, to answer.
Okay, good to go. Thank you.
Great.
Um, item fifteen is Grant Amendment for the, okay. Yeah, am I in the right spot? Grant Amendment for Lost Lake Community On-Site Sewerage System Improvement Project. So, disconnected to what we just saw?
Y- yes, sir. So this is actually phase one of, um, the replacement project. Um, it is a public works project with the, which is a contract that we haven't typically had in the past. And so we've just had some delays with getting pieces of it in place. Um, so we'd like to extend the expiration date from twelve thirty-one twenty-four to twelve thirty-one twenty-six. And we also took this opportunity to add some, um, termination clause language, make it easier for the county to terminate, um, should we choose to do so.
Questions on item fifteen? Seems like we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works is next. Good morning, Matt. Three items for Public Works. First is item sixteen, Contract Award for Steel Bridge Fabrication for Sean Drive Southwest at Unnamed Tributary to Dempsey Creek Fish Passage. We'll get a longer title for you next time. Uh, Public Works is requesting permission to award the contract for the fabrication of the steel bridge for the Sean Drive Fish Passage project. On October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, a total of two bids were received for the project. Uh, the low bid was received from Contact Engineered Solutions of West Chester, Ohio in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. This project is scheduled to begin construction in two thousand twenty-five. Ordering and manufacturing the bridge in advance of the contract this summer will save us eight months of lead time. A portion of the nine hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we've received in a grant from the Department of Ecology will be used to purchase the bridge. So to summarize, Public Works is requesting permission, um, from the Board of County Commissioners for the Public Works Director to execute a contract with Contact Engineered Solutions to complete the steel bridge fabrication for the Sean Drive Fish Passage project.
Matt, I have a couple of questions. How much was that grant from Department of Ecology?
Nine hundred and twenty-six thousand.
And I have a question in terms of, so they construct a bridge, and then they, like, how do they haul that in, like?
So it's, it's like a Lego set. It comes in pieces. So, um, usually it's a steel bridge, and so there'll be usually three semi-trucks, um, that will bring in all these big pieces of steel girders and steel part portions of the deck. They bring it to our Tilly facility. We have a crane there that offloads it. Then we'll come back and request permission from the county commissioners to go to add to do the construction of the project. And so once we have a contractor on board, we'll let the contractor know, hey, we already have the steel bridge sitting in our yard at Tilly. Come and get it when you're ready and put it in place.
And so they constructed at Tilly, and then they, like?
So it'll come in, I want to say the bridge will come in six or seven different pieces. And then, so they'll bring all those pieces and set them in place onsite and bolt them together in the field. Did you talk to that guy last week that does the concrete pouring bridge? I talked a lot to that guy. That was, uh, interesting. I forget the name of the company, but it was. I grabbed their little.
Cement something.
Because I wanted to ask you about it. Yeah, that was a little different because it, it's actually, they do concrete bridges. So they actually bring the forums onsite and actually pour concrete. With this setup, we don't have any concrete involved. It's just all steel. Yeah. Are there any done with, like, a three-D printer yet? Have you seen that where they three-D print concrete houses and stuff? Yep. I have, I've, uh, yeah, watched it on YouTube, actually, but, um, um, no, no bridges that I've seen, but it's probably not far away. They were saying, they were touting the, what benefits of that concrete, uh, process is like, y- like, they said it, it's minimally disruptive. Like, if you have a creek underneath, or if you have active, like, it's less disruptive to, like, whatever's going on around it or underneath it than some other ways of doing it. That was kind of one of their pitch-selling points. I know that's true, but. No, that's true. Anytime you can have a bridge that's, um, already prefabricated and you're bringing it onsite, it's gonna be less disturbance out in the field. All right, thank you, Matt. Are you here for the next one? I've tried a train car. Container. Okay. Next up is Materials Testing and Inspection Services On-Call Consultant Contract. Yeah, is this you? It's me. Okay. So, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Public Works Director to approve an amendment to the Materials Testing and Inspection Services On-Call Contract to increase the funding limit with Materials Testing Company, MTC, from two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand. Public Works typically uses local funds to pay for materials testing as part of our projects. The smaller amount of road fund is used, used for much larger, used to leverage much larger amounts of state and federal funds to complete the construction. Public Works solicited, uh, an RFP for On-Call Materials and Testing Inspection Services and awarded a multi-year contract to MTC initially on July eighth, two thousand twenty-one, with a ceiling amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The contract term is for a maximum of six years, consisting of a two-year base period and two two-year renewal periods, with a final contract completion date of July seventh, two thousand and twenty-seventh. The initial ceiling amount, two hundred and fifty thousand, was based upon a projection of costs scheduled for award through the contract-based term of two years. So staff has evaluated anticipated Materials Testing and Inspection Services, um, through two thousand twenty-five, and we're requesting, uh, increase in the funding limit by two hundred thousand. Again, that two hundred thousand is going to allow us to perform work on millions and millions of dollars of state and federal contracts. So to summarize, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Public Works Director to approve an amendment to the Materials Testing and Inspection Services Contract to increase the funding limit with MTC from two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand. Any questions from the board? Nope. Okay. Right. Uh, last Public Works item is.
Uh, last Public Works item is eighteen, uh, on consent agenda anyway. Request for qualification for Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal Phase Two.
All right, so Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works to issue an RFQ to complete a study for Phase Two of the Green Cove Fish Barrier Removal Project. The total cost of the study is estimated to be six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Public Works received five hundred thousand dollars in federal funding to complete the study. A twenty percent match is required and will come from the refunding that's been um allocated for the Fish Passage Enhancement Program. The goal of the study is to provide a recommendation for either a covert replacement or a bridge installation at the Thirty-Sixth Avenue and Kaiser Road Crossings. This is just upstream of the bridge that we're installing now on Green Cove. The estimated construction costs will be um prepared as part of an alternative analysis, which will help support future grant applications. Public Works will enter contract negotiations with the highest rated consultant firm, and subsequently, the negotiated contract will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners at a future date for consideration. So again, uh, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners authorize the Director of Public Works issue an RFQ for Phase Two of the Green Cove Creek Fish Barrier Removal Project.
It's good. It's exciting. Is there a total of three phases? Am I remembering that right?
Total of two phases, three crossings.
Yeah, okay. So this is gonna cover the next two crosses?
That's correct.
Oh, awesome.
And so hopefully, um, the results of the study will um will provide recommendations that we can apply uh apply for grant funding for.
Any questions? No.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
The videos are fantastic that happened on that project. Great job.
Okay, Sheriff's Office has uh three items in the consent agenda. First up is number nineteen, uh, contract amendment for inmate housing. Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, thanks for having us. Uh, so the first one is the contract housing with Lewis County. We come back for this one every year. Um, this is is overflow. As of right now, there are no inmates that are currently being housed in Lewis County, um, but this provides as a good backup alternative should we need to.
Have we used that in the last years? Many months? Six months or?
No, um, obviously, when I took over the first eight months that I was in office, the jail was still on COVID restrictions, so there's no one to really ship out. Um, and then after opening up the jail restrictions, our population went from about two hundred and forty-five per day. We're sitting at a little over three hundred now, um, but it fluctuates between three hundred and ten, all the way back down to two eighty is where we're kind of sitting. So obviously, the the options uh facility is still shut down. Um, so all of our inmates are still inside the.
And what's the number-ish that would trigger having to go to Lewis County?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a number of different factors. Um, I believe in that Lewis County contract, there's there's pieces in there about like, we don't just send the worst inmate that we have, for instance, right? Um, so we have a, when you talk about our our jail facility, there are dorms that are not full. However, our max unit is beyond capacity. So the the section of the jail that is housing our most violent and mentally ill offenders is at beyond max capacity. So those aren't the ones that Lewis County is gonna take from us. So that's the bigger issue is that our dorms, there's there's room for individuals coming into the dorms and going. Um, where we're really having space constraints are the ones that we're not gonna be able to ship out to Lewis County.
Okay, any questions for Sheriff on this item?
Um, I, well, it sounds like we maybe already covered this, but one of the questions I wrote down was how many people on average per year, and it sounds like it kind of fluctuates. And there's not probably a solid average because of COVID numbers.
Yeah, well, I mean, we do have those numbers. You can see prior to COVID, our average, I believe, was four hundred and ninety-ish. Um, during COVID, it dropped down to a little over two hundred. I think it was about two forty. When I took over, it was about two hundred and forty inmates. Um, after opening the jail up entirely, we saw a population jump to about two eighty. And then just recently, we saw it jump up to, last night it was at three hundred and eleven. Um, but there's always different factors that um fluctuate with that, you know? Um, most of the people that would be affected by me opening the jail are book and release. So those are individuals who are not going to end up staying there. So when you look at the overall long-term population, it has less to do with these individuals who are being cited and released for DUI or, you know, now, you know, the State Patrol can can book some of these people or county deputies can book these individuals in. But most of those individuals get booked and released um either immediately or the next day through court. Um, obviously, coming in with a population of three eleven, there was a really big court docket the other day. So we imagine that a good number of those individuals are gonna be released on their own recognizance or low bail, so.
Okay. Um, when was the last time we've had someone in the contract bed?
Oh, I'd, not since I've been elected, I don't believe.
Okay, so it's been a while?
It's been a while. Yeah, and obviously, going through COVID, when population's really low, restrictions are on, you're, there's no reason to. We have a facility, we already paid for it. There's no reason to send someone to Lewis County Jail um and pay more money on top of the money we're already paying to run our own jail, so.
We can check and see when that was.
We have that data for you.
Could we move this item to department items, just so that the public can kind of hear the details of it?
Yep, that's absolutely your right to have it moved off consent, so.
Thank you.
That's next Tuesday. I don't know, what else you guys have on the calendar? Is that?
Next Tuesday?
Yeah. Sheriff, this is something you bring every year, though, correct?
Yes, this is a, it's a precautionary item. Obviously, in the event that we needed to send someone on an overflow bed, that we would have that opportunity. Um, again, since being in office, we have not done that so far, so.
Anything specific you want them to mention?
Um, no, I mean, the conversation that we have had this morning is totally fine. Um, I don't think I have any questions. I did read through that contract uh last night, and I misunderstood, I think, what it was for. I think I was, I had it flipped in my head and thought it was for us to contract out people here. So I'm gonna read through it again and see if I have any other questions, but yeah.
So if the con conversation is fine, are we okay to leave it on consent? Since this is public and.
No, I'd like to have it on department items.
You wanna have the conversation again on Tuesday?
I'd just like that to be on department items for us to like, we don't have to have the full conversation. Um, but the public, you know, I, a lot of people have just questions about what's going on with our sheriff's office. So having it on department would allow us to, you know, specifically name it and have that conversation if we need to.
Okay, well, it has to go on department if it's not agreed by all commissioners, so that'll be a move that you can make, clerk? Okay, thank you. Let's go to um. Item twenty, your local agreement with Washington State Department of Corrections, Cedar Creek Correction Center.
I'll let Governor Sheriff Pierce solve it. He he didn't want you to tell on this one.
It's just a agreement with between us and Cedar Creek to, they want an agreement in place that the sheriff's office will respond anytime they have any emergencies if requested by them, so. Just like anybody else, they call nine-one-one and we'll respond, basically, but they need something in writing.
Do we have one already or is this something new?
Yeah, I think that we have one already.
Okay, any questions on twenty? Nope, let's go to twenty-one. Okay, we uh previewed this earlier. Transfer of retired canine Bowie, that's how you say it? Bowie, not David Bowie, but Bob Bowie, uh, to Sergeant Nalt. So, yeah, we heard kind of the background, and this is just documentation we need to do?
Yep, yep.
Questions on transfer Bowie? All right, cool. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up is item twenty-two, treasurer's sale of tax titled property via public auction. Jeff Gaddman.
Good to see you on the mend, Jeff.
Yeah, it's good.
Feeling good?
Got to get yourself one of these. Yeah, everything is going great. First time any, so I had a shoulder replacement, just in case anybody's wondering. First time in a year and a half, I have no pain. It is pretty frickin' incredible.
You're gonna be even happier now.
Yeah, exactly. Look out. Item before you is a tax titled property. We brought it to you a couple of months ago. We had received a, an offer to get in, uh, offer to buy the property through private negotiation. At the time, uh, understanding was that there was no uh potable water available to the property. So it appeared to be an unbuildable property. Uh, since that time, found out that the Cougar Mountain Community Water System is available. And where the the thought was that it wasn't available years ago, so there's a bridge over the creek there, and I don't remember the name of the creek. And the water system transits over that creek via the bridge. And years ago, this was twenty-five some odd years ago, uh, the bridge had been damaged, it damaged the water pipe. And the assessor's office information at that time was that the community water system had no interest in repairing that water pipe because the repairs to the bridge were kind of expensive. Well, after I brought you the private negotiation offer, uh, come to find out that that pipe had been repaired and the water is available to this property. So the prudent uh path forward at this point is to throw it up for public auction.
Commissioners, just want to uh thank Jeff and the Central Services Team for working to get the notices out. That was something that popped up as part of um the tax title property conversation, and both teams worked together to get that up and out. And so now they are starting to notice um broader, broadly, so that folks are aware of these types of properties. And thank you both for your efforts.
Absolutely. Questions on item twenty-two? No. All right, thank you. You all have a very, very happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
See you up in.
Taking three pointers?
Up in uh.
I'm gonna be ready for Mariners spring training.
I was gonna say.
I just need a note for my dog.
All right. All right, next up, we have a whole slew of auditor um voucher lists for the last, if I counted correctly, seventeen weeks.
Yeah, we're on track now. I don't see anyone from the auditor's team here. Um, these have been sent out uh in their normal fashion and will now be on a regular cycle, I believe.
Okay, that was my question. I was like, I know the delays, I'm not sure if that can be just kind of covered before consent agenda is approved, the day of the meeting, just saying.
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, the voucher list, you'll see several of those. It's because of delays with TC Connect. That way, there's not this idea that we've just been delaying these, but there's an actual reason for.
Yeah, no, the auditor's team has been working extremely hard in the midst of TC Connect migration. It's normal for things to go on pause, and so they're uh in the process of catching up, and we'll be sending them out more regularly.
Okay, so then if there's no questions there, we'll have that advisement, and I'll jump, we'll jump to department items. Item four A is a community planning economic development correction to resolution six, one-six-three-three-one. And ordinance one-six-three-three-two, Greg Cuiyo Park, Lacey UGA.
We'll contact Ashley.
Yeah, she was here.
This seems like something that could be a consent agenda item or anything, or.
I don't know really what it is yet, but maybe, yeah, seems like correcting a clerical error, updating an acreage and map. Yeah, this was something that um when we had the meeting with the city of, City of Lacey, was it? Yeah, there was just a, there was a, a mistake that the staff found afterward, and we want to bring that back just to make sure that it's clear for public record that we're fixing what we presented.
The map that we reference in the words is different than the map that's pictured, so we're just changing that map. And it focuses.
It's these types of items that if we don't fix it this way, if staff just go back on the back end and fix it, what will happen is there'll be a document that says this, and then this will appear. And while staff are doing their due diligence, folks may think nefarious actions have taken place from here to there. And sometimes community members, hypothetically speaking, could use that to say, aha, the county's doing something wrong when in fact, there is nothing wrong going on, so.
Or even create videos to that effect.
Hypothetically speaking.
All kinds of things.
Um, so in in that environment, we want to just err on the side of caution and transparency, to bring that back. And I think we've completely stolen Andrew's thunder. But with that, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. I think we recognized there was an error, and we consulted with our prosecuting attorney's office, who let us know what the process would be to to address that error, and we wanted to do that in the venue for full transparency.
And that's why we'd leave it on department items.
So it's worth the explanation on that basis.
Yep.
All right, well, then let's leave it there, and.
Thank you.
Central Services is up next, five A, contract award for Thurston County Mottman One Ballot Processing Center Project.
Morning Commissioners, Tony Shaw, Capital Project Manager with Central Services.
Is that last one, is that, is that a consent agenda item or?
We're gonna leave it on department items just so that we can.
Okay, have that.
Yeah, have that data log.
Sure, clear the communication.
Sorry.
Yeah, so I'm happy to announce, we received ten very competitive bids for the ballot processing uh remodel portion of the uh election security and integrity upgrades, uh, part of which is coming out of the uh Prop One bond. So uh, the winner and low bid um was Construct Inc. out of Tumwater with a price of three million, sixty-nine thousand dollars. Construct is the company that did our voter services project. Uh, so there's a lot of familiarity and a relationship there with the stakeholders, which is exciting as well. Um, so I'm here for any questions.
It's keeping it hyper-local.
Yes, very local.
Questions for Tony?
No, just props to Tony. He's done a fantastic job with both projects. And uh, I know I've heard uh, you know, kudos from the auditor's office and the work that you did with the Voter Processing Center, um, so excited for round two.
Can you tell us more about the timeline that's expected?
Yeah, so we actually expect to uh start demolition the moment the contract's signed on the third. Uh, Construct has already begun the process to get ready, and uh I am actively working with the auditor's election staff. There was an MOU signed, uh, to be able to provide storage to remove everything out of there um with uh Facilities Group, which was a a really good collaboration um to enable us to to really hit the ground running right away. Our anticipated move-in date will be July of twenty-five, so another pretty aggressive timeline. The reason for that is because the election windows are very set in stone, and we we have to work around them. And so, uh, again, through a collaboration with Tilly over in the elections group, we were able to figure out how to keep them up and running for the February election. Uh, the Yelm School District is going, or Yelm Community Schools, excuse me, will be running an election in February. And uh, we needed to figure out how to to keep elections running to to enable that, and we found a good workaround for that, so.
Do you have like, um, so I'm assuming that the design of what is gonna be done is all dialed up to the auditor's satisfaction and et cetera, et cetera, in terms of what you're doing over there?
Yeah, so the initial design was in twenty-twenty-two, and that was uh when that design study was done. It was uh, it became very apparent at the time, the county didn't have the funding resources to do that design. And that's when we pivoted that funding over to voter services. With the Prop One uh passing, that allowed us to restart that design, but also from a different lens of, okay, we know we have the funding to do this right. And by right, that means bringing in Homeland Security, looking at what's going on out in the industry, and allowing Auditor Hall to to weigh in on what she would like to see, um, particularly around the level of security. Um, and so.
While staying in budget.
Correct, yes, while staying in a budget and being fiscally responsible. So there were some some really good collaborative conversations of, while it would be nice to have the best of everything and the highest level of security out there possible, is that fiscally responsible? And is it, and and manageable long-term? And I think uh as a group, we were able to come together and have several great conversations and land on a spot where uh we were fiscally responsible and we provided that level that Auditor Hall was comfortable with as well.
Yeah, I think um, yeah, Tony, your customer service can't be overstated in moving the the construction timetable on such a sensitive um type of facility with an elected official um who handles such important aspects of county business. I know that the auditor was very complimentary when um I toured the facility, uh, and it was that relationship you. And it was that relationship you fostered between her team, which we really appreciate the hard work that they do, and the construction team, and they were even there on the tour. So being able to do that isn't always easy. So thank you, thanks Rick for leadership as well as supervision. Appreciate that as a tone-setting in our organization. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on item five A?
Thank you very much.
Public Works is up next with four items. Six A is a contract award, twenty-twenty-five overlay project.
Public Works, excuse me, Public Works is requesting permission to award a contract for the twenty-twenty-five overlay project on November seventh. Total four bids were received for the project. The low bid was received from Lakeside Industries, from Centaria, Washington, in the amount of one-point-six-nine million dollars. The project is scheduled to be performed in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. The contract includes three-point-one-seven-eight miles of overlay in southwest Thurston County. The roadways include one-hundred-and-eighty-third southwest between Sergeant Road and Old Highway ninety-nine, as well as Old Highway nine between Carper Street southwest and State Route twelve. Construction costs for this project will come from ARPA funding. So to summarize, Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners, Board of Public Works Director, to execute a contract with Lakeside Industries to complete the work included in the two thousand twenty-five overlay contract.
She said three-point-one-seven-eight miles.
Three-point-one-seven-eight miles.
Any other questions for Matt?
All right, good deal. Go to six B, contract award for Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Regional Infiltration Reduction Project.
It's okay if you can do six, or the next item, these are combined.
Okay, it's two B and C then.
So Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to approve a resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Cooper Road Southwest at the Mock Shahelis Creek for a single time period not to exceed twenty weeks from between May first, two thousand twenty-five, and October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. This closure is needed to accommodate the construction of the Cooper Road Southwest at Shahelis Creek Culver Replacement Project.
Just to stop you for a minute, you're looking at C and D, correct?
Correct.
I was going to be. Boston Harbor. Sorry, Tim. And then we'll jump to C and D. Let's go back.
Sorry about that.
Contract award for Boston Harbor. This is two.
Good morning Commissioners, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works, filling in for Joe Plahuta, our Senior Water Resources Engineer. This item is a request that the Board award the contract for the Boston Harbor Water Main Replacements and Inflow and Infiltration Reduction Project to Tapany Incorporated of Battleground, Washington, in the amount of two million one-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. And to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any change orders for this project for an aggregate of two-point-four-one-nine million dollars. This is an ARPA-funded project, of which seven bids were received, with Tapany being the low responsive bidder. And this project will replace approximately six thousand linear feet of older, small diameter water main in the Boston Harbor community. In addition, the project will rehabilitate existing step tanks to improve serviceability and reduce infiltration and inflow into the sewer system. Reducing infiltration and inflow would help the Boston Harbor Wastewater Treatment Facility maintain compliance with its discharge permit. And with that, I would answer any questions the Board may have.
No, this is kind of like the, one of the infrastructure projects that we identified right at the beginning of ARPA and we're moving along the timeline and it's great to see this moving forward. Because that's been on long-needed infrastructure repair that we weren't sure how we were gonna be able to afford. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to C and D, back to Matt. You were laying it out for us.
I'm gonna pick up where I left off.
We're on a roll.
So Public Works plans on soliciting bids for construction of the bridge through a standard call for sealed bids. There is no access to private property along this closure. Visitors of the Capitol Forest will follow a designated detour along Maple Drive Southwest. This section of Cooper Road has an average daily traffic volume of thirty-two vehicles per day. A detour route will be established, which will is a quarter mile long and take approximately one minute. Traffic is going to be rerouted to Maple Drive, which is one-lane private road owned by Grace Harbor County. So to summarize, Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the county engineer to temporarily close Cooper Road Southwest at the crossing of the Mock Shahelis Creek for a single time period not to exceed twenty weeks within the time period between May first and October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
So you're saying the detour goes into Grace Harbor?
So it's actually, there's a, there's a park there that next, at the entrance to the state forest. And that park actually is owned by Grace Harbor.
Oh, and it's in, okay.
Yeah.
So, but we don't have to coordinate with them in terms of.
We've already coordinated.
You already have, okay. All right, great. Okay, then that takes care of Public Works items under item six. Sorry about that again. I get lost on them, Jen knows. Public Health, seven A, contract with Family Support Center for Affordable Housing Acquisition. Back to Alex.
Morning. Good morning Commissioners, Alex First, Affordable Housing Program Manager in the Office of Housing and Home Prevention. I am requesting the approval of a contract with Family Support Center Southbound in the amount of one million dollars for the acquisition of land and property located at two-four-four-zero-one-three-one-five-eight and three-five-two-zero-seventh Avenue Southwest in Olympia for the development of affordable housing. So this project in August twenty-twenty-four, Family Support Center, which is a nonprofit here in Olympia, they submitted an application to the Regional Housing Council's Affordable Housing Advisory Board Opportunity Fund. The Opportunity Fund was set up by the Advisory Board as a set aside of funding towards projects who were seeking funding outside of the annual request for proposals that the Regional Housing Council has. In order to receive an award from the Opportunity Fund, this project must be emergent in nature, have been unforeseen at the time of the most recent RFP, and need funding in order to actualize the project. So the Family Support Center submitted an application for a million dollars request to assist in the acquisition of three acres of property located at the address I previously stated. They are requesting the acquisition of this property, which currently has four existing housing units on it, a duplex with two-bedroom units, a three-bedroom single-family home, and a one-bedroom single-family home. So their proposal includes two phases of their project. Phase one includes the acquisition of the properties and utilizing the existing housing to provide permanent supportive rental housing to low-income families with children and survivors of domestic violence. And then within eight years, they hope to initiate phase two of the project, which would include the demolition of that existing housing to make way for an additional large-scale development. So this property is located beside the property that they recently, I think in two thousand twenty-three, completed, the landing, which is sixty-two units of affordable rental housing. So they intend to develop another multifamily housing structure there and possibly to develop another sixty-to-a-hundred-unit complex. So the Family Support Center application was reviewed by the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. They discussed the application at their August fifteenth meeting and recommended funding the project. That recommendation was then taken to the Regional Housing Council at their August twenty-eighth meeting. The RHC unanimously approved the TAHAB's recommendation to fund this project. Both the TAHAB and the RHC agreed that additional conditions should be added to the contract, which are included in the contract that was attached to this AIS, which include providing the county with a tenant relocation plan and copies of housing quality standard inspections completed on each unit. We have received all of those items. So since the August meeting, we've completed our necessary underwriting requirements here in our office. We are asking permission to use the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, so ARPA funds to be used for this project. The closing is currently scheduled for December twentieth, so meeting the ARPA requirements of having these funds obligated by the end of the year. ARPA requirements also include that tenants that would occupy this housing must be less than eighty percent of the area median income with a period of affordability of at least twenty years. So this project specifically at this time would include for SLR facists or projects. I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So that was a lot of information. So the Opportunity Fund, it sounds like is, was funded with ARPA dollars?
So originally, the Opportunity Fund were using local home fund dollars. So I know we have had a lot of conversations with you all around the ARPA dollars and how we're obligating them for affordable housing projects. And we had originally intended to fund the Housing Authority Sequoia North project with ARPA dollars. They've run into issues with Gophers. So that project won't be able to meet our ARPA timeline. So now we are, this proposal is, we're swapping those ARPA dollars from the Housing Authority project to this Family Support Center project. So the Housing Authority project will be made with the local home fund dollars. And since this project, the Family Support Center project, fits the timeline that we need for the ARPA dollars, we're requesting to use those dollars for this project and stuff.
Alex, if I may, Commissioners, we sent out some detail in an email. If you need, any of you need us to resend that to you, you can. I think Rob, Tom, Jen, and Alex all worked on putting that together. There are some next steps that we're still working through with the budget team. And that's what I mentioned earlier, that we'll be coming back at a work session just to make sure we're all on the same page and moving the ARPA dollars in the right direction.
Questions for Alex?
Gift that keeps on giving.
Okay, looks like we're good there. That'll bring us to standing items for Commissioners and the end. Oh, we have a public hearing. This is set for three o'clock.
Sorry, three-thirty, we'll make that.
Okay, three-thirty. And it's a CPED item regarding Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing Code update.
Great. Good morning Commissioners, Andrew Defogus, Interim Community Planning Manager. So this item is to hold a public hearing to receive and consider public testimony on the Less Restrictive Alternative, or LRA, Community Housing Code update. This is docket item Development Code Docket eight-thirty. It's a county-initiated amendment in response to twenty-twenty-one updates to state law, as well as proposed LRA facility in two thousand twenty-three. So in two thousand twenty-one, the state law was changed to mandate that jurisdictions allow localized private LRA community housing. This item is priority number four on our Development Code docket. It amends Thurston County Code Titles twenty to twenty-three by creating a definition for LRA community housing, as well as outlining uses and standards for those facilities. The proposed amendment would apply to all of Thurston County, including Lacey, Olympia, and Tumwater Urban Growth Areas. And the amendments to the code create a definition for Less Restrictive Alternative, or LRA, housing and outline uses and standards, including requirement for special use permits, new definitions for the use, including references to state law, permitted distribution across zoning districts. This item was reviewed by the Planning Commission in two thousand twenty-four and held for work sessions in a public hearing. And was recently reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners with two work sessions as well.
Next step in the process.
Is the public, correct?
Everything similar to what we saw when the Board made the decisions to advance. Questions on the setting of the, or, we're having the public hearing. We already said it, it's gonna be next Tuesday. All right?
Thank you.
So I think, just real quick, Andy, just, again, I want to make sure the Board is aware that this public hearing may have a lot of visibility and that this is the Board's direction to ensure that the community has their time to engage on this topic. So again, appreciate the Board's leadership in making sure that this topic is available for folks to hear and understand. And we'll provide an overview at that time.
Does he need to do an overview?
It'll probably be Ashley, I would imagine.
Can Ashley just kind of emphasize the, at whatever level? I mean, it doesn't have to be in nauseating detail, but just emphasizing the concept that the Board balanced the things that we wanted to do with legal sideboards that we had to respect. And a lot of, you know, a lot of the choices that people might have questions about resulted from that debate about how far can we go legally with respect to the, you know, the sideboards that we're operating. I think folks need to hear that in case they're wondering.
Definitely.
Why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that?
Right, and I think that's exactly right. In the introduction, we'll have the legal sideboards that we were guided as staff. And then there's also the Planning Commission's recommendation that go further than what our legal counsel said was permissible at this time. So you'll have all of that information. And in the introduction, we'll make sure that Ashley frames it in that way as well.
Is there a way to talk about how what happened would have gone differently if these rules were in place?
Yeah, potentially in terms of like the community outreach before the site, potentially.
Yeah, we can craft that into the message. And Josh and I had a really productive meeting with a couple of representatives. And they've been invited to attend the public hearing. At least one of them said absolutely, and the other one was checking the calendar.
State representatives?
State representatives, yeah, sorry.
It's Reps Griffey and Kotur, and they've been appreciative of the Board's work on this topic.
Absolutely.
We'll see what we can pull together for you. Thank you.
That's the agenda for the.
Before we move on, I'd like to note that a resolution to certify the twenty-twenty-four property tax levies will be added to the agenda for next week. The, it's technically, it's due to the assessor by December fifteenth, but we don't have another board meeting before then, so it will be added to this agenda. It's on the, included in the budget schedule.
Should we go over it one more time?
So the resolution to certify the property tax levies will be added as a department item to this agenda?
It comes through every, every year.
Every year.
And it's.
That has to be done in advance. I mean, there is a meeting where we go through all these packet of resolutions.
So that's scheduled for December seventeenth? If you don't certify the levy before December fifteenth, then you cannot increase it.
So it's just the next, the only meeting.
The action for next week is to certify the levy. And then on December seventeenth, you will set the levy. And I know it feels a little backwards, but that's how it's set up in the law.
And do we need, what kind of background do we, are we gonna get or do we need on that item? I mean, what's included there? Is it, I mean, there's obviously the one percent issue, but there's, there's a, there's a more complicated calculation that is involved in setting the levy. I just want to remind myself and maybe the new Commissioners on what that entails.
So the certification resolution includes the four funds that receive property tax levy. Those are General Fund, Medic One, Conservation Futures, and the County Roads Fund. Each one, the General Fund is the most complicated, of course. It includes the amount of levy for the General Fund and the earmarks that go to Public Health for the DD population and to Veterans Services. The numbers include the one percent levy increase, the calculation for new construction, and the property tax refunds from this year. And the Road Fund specifies that there will be a one-point-five-million-dollar diversion as well as the levy shift. And I don't know that it's all gonna.
Well, it was decided last year.
Yep, all of this has been reviewed in the budget process.
And it'll be included in the.
It's all in the resolution that you'll have.
Can we get the resolution ahead of time just?
Absolutely. So once we get the item from the budget team, we'll send it out as a separate email.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if people have questions about the calculation or something, I mean, that's what we're approving, so.
Right.
Right.
calculation is uninteresting.
Walked us through it multiple times, but it's, yeah, it's a little bit.
Send it out separate once we get it from the budget team.
Okay, so that would be a department item under.
Under Commissioners.
Yeah.
Budget, and I think I said December fifth, a couple of times, December third is the meeting. So I think I misspoke earlier, I keep saying December fifth.
I mean, that, the agenda was light, so an i- extra item wouldn't, wouldn't make a difference.
This is Tuesday, December third, that's our agenda. Alright, then let's look at Advisory Boards and Commissions.
Commissioners, Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. There are, um, just a few items for this morning. And these, this is being provided TO's information today, and we can circle back next week if you'd like. Um, Gary Klein has applied for reappointment to the Agriculture Advisory Committee. He is eligible for a reappointment and would serve, uh, another four-year term. Are there any questions?
We usually get recommendations from the Ag Committee? They did, okay, so when would this be agendized?
It can be added to the agenda of December third if you'd like.
Okay, two thumbs, three thumbs, four thumbs, let's move him on.
One, oh, one question, sorry, is this, uh, just a community member or a farmer member?
Farmer.
It's a farmer member, and we have another farmer position open, so. We don't have applications coming, and so I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with Gary.
Okay, let me see. Um, go ahead.
Items for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee are two applications for reappointment. Um, Carrie LaRat and Kathy, Kathy McWade, um, both are eligible for reappointment. And they represent, um, specific seats on LTAC. Uh, Carrie represents funded activities. And Kathy represents, also represents funded activities. And Kathy sits on LTAC as a member of, representing the Fair Board. And Carrie represents the Columbus Park Campground.
They did a great job last year.
These positions, I think, are historically tough to fill due to the requirement.
I agree with that, so it's good.
Are there any questions for those reappointments?
I think we're good on those.
Last one is for the Noxious Weed Board. Jennifer Colvin has applied and is eligible for Lead District Four. And I'd like to point out that the lead districts are different than Commissioner districts. And so she, uh, she does reside in Lead District Four and is eligible for that position. The Noxious Weed Control Board also has a few vacancies, and those are tough to fill.
You're on there.
Yep, yep.
Before she changes her minds.
Yeah. I, yeah. I was surprised to see for an application for appointment, you need to get signatures from registered voters residing, and so, right? And so I, I, this has been one that's been historically hard to fill, and I, I'm just wondering, like, is, is that? Is, is it based on?
RCW.
RCW that they have to require?
The signatures, and then the Noxious Weed Board holds a public hearing.
Wow.
Serious stuff, Noxious Weeds.
I'm okay with, you know.
Sounds great, alright, thanks for that recruitment. Um, okay, um, that covers Advisory Boards and Commissions?
Yes.
Alright, then we're up to Commissioner Items, any, anything we need to address this morning? Just out of, this is kind of a random thing that has come to my attention, Maple Court, we're gonna, Regional Housing Council. What's the latest and greatest? I know there was some kerfuffle several, like, six months ago about how they were managed, and we had a presentation about that. And, uh, I haven't heard much about it, which usually no news is good news, but is it operational? Is it, is there still problems with City of Lacey? Does anyone have an update?
So we are working that through with, with our team and actually working with the courts.
Different one.
Oh.
Different one.
Gotcha.
You're thinking Maple Lane.
Okay.
Different, you're thinking about ITA.
Maybe we curse the hotel up near Hawks Prairie?
Anything about that?
That was turned into a, like, a shut line.
Thanks for calling me out.
It was like, oh, wait, in a different direction.
Has anyone heard anything I should know about? Cause I guess I'm asking my teammates.
Nothing that I wanna, nothing, yeah, like, can report off cuff.
Maybe we can get an update from staff, some.
Sure.
So.
That's Maple Court.
Court, so, um, what I've heard, uh, is that, um, they're still moving forward. They're still, you know, they're going, um.
It's full?
It is full, and every time that there is a vacancy, I mean, they're going through the list pretty quickly. Um, they're moving in through different, uh, campgrounds. I haven't reviewed the notes from, uh, this morning's meetings, I'm not sure. And so, uh, they are having bi-weekly check-ins still with Department of Commerce.
Is this still the same, uh, organization that's managing?
Yes, it's still Lehigh.
Okay.
And they are continuing to work with the City of Lacey.
Okay, I was just curious, cause I hadn't heard much. Okay, any other Commissioner Items? Alright, things are ready, we're adjourned.